... meeting, May tenth, meeting to order at seven P. M. Or Ms. Johnson, if you'll call, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Butler?
Present.
Mr. Callie?
Here.
Mr. Jenkins is absent tonight. Mr. McDonald?
Present.
Ms. Rainey?
Present.
Ms. Shulist?
Here.
And Ms. Senyard?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. If you'll join me for our opening prayer and pledge. Lord, we're in meeting today to collect matters of business. Got our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a special conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move to approval of the agenda. Mr. Bygdon, was there an item I need to add on bond? Good with it?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Rainey, Senyard, any additional discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
And Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move to citizens' comments.
There are none tonight.
Thank you. Move to approval of the amendments from the April twelfth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting.
Make a motion we approve.
Second.
Anderson, Shulist, any additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
And Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Go ahead, Mr. Jenkins. New business item one, PC resolution, PC thirty dash twenty-two, annexation seventy-three fifty Snowmangrum Road, project ten point one two acres, map forty-seven parcel sixty-four oh one, property owner, Robert Butler.
I have a staff report for PC thirty dash twenty-two and PC thirty-one dash twenty-two. The addresses are seventy-three fifty and seventy-three sixty Snowmangrum Road. Those will be items number one and two. Mr. Robert Butler, property owner of seventy-three fifty and seventy-three sixty Snowmangrum Road, has submitted to the city of Fairview a request for annexation. Seventy-three fifty Snowmangrum Road contains ten point one two acres and seventy-three sixty Snowmangrum Road contains two point zero acres. Project is located on Snowmangrum Road. The properties directly surrounding this project to the north, south, and east are zoned RS twenty and is surrounded by, to the west, by Fairview High School and Fairview Middle School. The properties are surrounded, or all surround this property are city properties. The intent is, I would like to annex my property at seventy-three fifty and seventy-three sixty Snowmangrum Road into the city of Fairview. The plan of services have been included in the resolutions, PC thirty twenty-two and PC thirty-one twenty-two. We have no additional staff comments and there are no conditions of approval for seventy-three fifty Snowmangrum Road.
Thank you, sir. So this parcel's at the end of, Snowmangrum juts out off of the high school parking lot there. We can't necessarily see the high school there, but that's right in the center of town for this parcel. Any questions or discussion?
This would come in as a RS forty?
It would come in as a standard RS forty, that's correct.
I'll motion we approve.
Second.
Senyard, Shulist? Any additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
And Mr. Butler?
Aye.
All in favor?
New business item two, PC resolution, PC thirty-one dash twenty-two, annexation seventy-three sixty Snowmangrum Road, project two acres, map forty-seven parcel sixty-five, property owner, Robert Butler. Same staff comment that you just read, same, similar parcel.
That's correct. It's the smaller parcel of the two, same location, and again, surrounded by properties that are all within the corporate limits.
Make a motion we approve PC thirty-one thirty-two.
I'll second.
Ali, Senyard, any additional questions or discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
And Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Item three, new business, PC resolution, PC thirty-three twenty-two, rezoning seventy-five fifty-six Horn Tavern Road project, fifteen acres, map twenty-two parcel seventeen, current zoning RS forty residential, proposed zoning RS fifteen residential. Property owner, Gene Hatcher.
The staff report for PC thirty-three dash twenty-two and PC thirty-four dash twenty-two will be read together for items three and four, as both pieces have come in side by side, but will be voted separately. Tim Mangram, Duke and Duke LLC, has submitted to the city of Fairview a request for rezoning of seven six five six and seven six five two Horn Tavern Road properties. This project is located at map twenty-two parcel seventeen and eighteen, which are along Horn Tavern Road. Seven six five six Horn Tavern Road contains fifteen acres, seven six five two Horn Tavern Road contains two acres of the property. The properties are surrounded to the west by RS fifteen development pepper tree and surrounded to the south and east by RS forty properties. The applicant is requesting an RS fifteen residential single-family zoning. The letter of intent, the intent of this is to rezone to allow for a single-family development. We have no additional staff comments and no conditions of approval for PC thirty-three twenty-two and PC thirty-four twenty-two.
Thank you, sir. Like you said, Stane, if you have any additional?
Tim Mangram, so we submitted this, of course, this is adjoining Pepper Tree. I wish there was still a way we connect these. Zoning is very similar, other than Pepper Tree was an RS fifteen pud. So we're just asking for something very similar to that.
Does have sewers?
Yes.
Regular sewers?
Conventional sewer. Yes, sir.
Any discussion or questions?
Does this fit the master plan or the master development plan?
It is in the, identified it in the new residential medium neighborhood, which does allow for RS twenty pud, which would actually be a ten thousand lot, so it's actually bigger than the minimum. Staff, am I wrong on the area? Or is that correct?
That would be correct for the RS twenty pud.
Additional questions or discussion? So the, this is on Horn Tavern Road, the adjoining parcels, pepper trees, and pepper tree is a pud. Are those lots smaller than what these proposed lots would be?
That's correct.
Larger?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Rainey, McDonald? Any additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
New business item five, PC resolution, PC thirty-five dash twenty-two, rezoning Wiley Court project four point five two. Sorry, number four. PC resolution, PC thirty-four twenty-two rezoning seventy-six fifty-two Horn Tavern Road project, two acres, map twenty-two parcel eighteen, current zoning RS forty residential, proposed zoning RS fifteen residential, property owner, Gene Hatcher. So this is adjoining parcel to that, to that project, same. Same staff report and comments.
Yeah, this, this parcel here does have a house on it, which we will, we will remodel and configure to meet with the rest of the neighborhood if, if it's approved.
Make a motion we approve.
I'll second.
Anderson, Senyard? Any additional questions or discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Stane.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
And Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business item five, PC resolution, PC thirty-five dash twenty-two, rezoning Wiley Court project four point five two acres, map forty-two HC parcel zero zero eight, current zoning RS forty residential, proposed zoning C one commercial, property owner, Lloyd Hardcastle.
I have a staff report for PC thirty-five dash twenty-two. Mr. Lloyd Hardcastle, property owner, has submitted to the city of Fairview a request for rezoning for seven one zero three Wiley Circle from its current zoning of RS forty residential to proposed zoning of C one commercial. This project is located at map forty-two HC parcel eight, which contains four point five two acres. Seven one zero three Wiley Circle has frontage on both Fairview Boulevard and Wiley Circle and is surrounded to the north, south, and west with RS forty property and Commercial General to the east. For the letter of intent, the owners of the property at seven one zero three Wiley Circle in Fairview Tennessee would like to ask the property be rezoned from residential commercial. We have no further staff comments and no conditions of approval.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion, questions? Anyone here like to speak on it from the applicant?
Staff, can you remind us what?
Yes. For C one, which is part of ordinance twenty twenty-one fifteen from BOC, C one would allow for a restaurant, transient habitation, retail sales, general business and communications, banking, financial insurance, and real estate services, health, fitness, and same-day medical care facilities, professional services, and indoor entertainment and amusement services.
There's already a business up on that hill, right?
Up on the hill is, it's an older house and then a church that has, I believe, been closed down in the last several years, but the, what looked to be a business was a previous church and possibly school in the much earlier history.
So is that Fairview's one-room school, that, that old building that up on the hill?
You're asking me questions I would not be able to answer. But there is a road to the school and it's possibly?
Okay.
That one-way road school?
Okay.
I thought that was like a vacuum business.
Okay. It was even before my time.
This piece connects Fairview Boulevard up to Wiley Circle, kind of surrounds Chapels or Murphy's.
And this parcel falls within the town center designation on our twenty forty plan for mix, you know, retail, restaurant, office, multifamily, single-family, walkable kind of area.
Motion to approve?
Second.
McDonald, Shulist, any additional questions or discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
And Mr. Butler?
Aye.
New business item six, PC resolution, PC thirty-six twenty-two rezoning Murphy Project, seven point two acres, map forty-seven parcel ten, current zoning IG Industrial General, proposed zoning C one commercial, property owner, France Scott Fetzer Company.
The staff report for PC thirty-six twenty-two, Mr. Chad Murphy and Mr. Todd Murphy, the agents representing the Murphy rezoning project, with written approval by the rightful owners, Michael Nichols of France Scott Fetzer Company, is requesting that the property be rezoned from its current zoning of Industrial General to proposed zone of C one commercial, same uses as the last item. This project is located at map forty-seven parcel ten, which contains seven point two acres. The Murphy property has frontaged on Fairview Boulevard and Planters Road and is surrounded to the south and east with RM twelve multifamily properties and Commercial General to the north and west. The letter of intent is be able to build a ten to fourteen thousand retail building. We have no additional staff comments and no additional conditions of approval.
Sir, if you could state your name for me if you have any information for us?
Chad Murphy.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or discussion? This piece is, I think, right in the center of town, right after truck supply there is the old France location that, in talking of Fairview history, I think maybe burned in the seventies or so, is that, is that right?
Seventies to eighties, I believe.
So it's been an old site that's kind of been there and been lost for a long time, and it's interesting to see it back on.
Is that the, it's like up on a hill, parking lot up there? Oh, yeah.
Have a tenant in mind at this time?
No, we're looking to build a ten thousand to fourteen thousand square foot retail building.
Make a motion to approve PC thirty-six twenty-two?
Second.
Callie, Rainey, any additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
And Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
And Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to recuse myself from items seven and eight. I have no future interest in the parcels, but I was involved in the purchase of the parcel.
Item seven, PC resolution, PC dash thirty-seven dash twenty-two, final plat, Highberry Point Project, two lots on thirty-eight point fifty-nine acres, map zero one eight, parcel zero three eight, property owner, OP Highberry Point LLC.
The staff report for PC thirty-seven dash twenty-two. Mr. Cole, I'm not going to try to pronounce his last name because I would absolutely butcher it. T-Square Engineering has submitted to the city of Fairview a request for final plat approval for the Highberry Point Project. The property contains thirty-eight point five nine acres and is zoned RM twenty to the north and RM eight to the south. This final plat was previously approved by the Planning Commission on February ninth, twenty twenty-one, and the Board of Commissioners on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. This project is located at map forty-three and parcel twenty-three. The letter of intent is, this plat expired in February of twenty twenty-two prior to the recording, and this is a resubmital. Following staff comments, signature block shall be updated prior to city Fairview signatures being recorded. And conditions of approval, approval of the final plat shall be valid for filing for one year from the date of Planning Commission approval. Any modifications to the approved plat shall be submitted to the city of Fairview and may result in Planning Commission reconsideration.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second. Any additional comments or discussion?
Has anything changed from this final plat between now and last year on April fifteenth?
For the final plat, nothing has changed, and they submitted the same plat that was approved then.
Cool, thank you, sir.
All right, roll call.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
And Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Item eight, PC resolution, PC dash four one dash two two, master development plan, Highberry Point Project, two hundred and forty proposed multifamily units on eighteen point three five acres, map zero one eight, part of parcel zero three eight, property owner, OP Highberry Point LLC.
The staff report for PC forty-one dash twenty-two will be a much modified reading of that report. That was all sent out for everyone for their reading, but there has been a project submitted by T-Square Engineering for the master development plan for Highberry Point. This development will be a single-phase development. The proposed parcel for development, based on final plat from PC thirty-seven twenty-two, will contain eighteen point thirty-five acres and is zoned RM twenty multifamily. This property is located across from New Hope Road on Highway ninety-six north. The adjacent properties to the south and east are zoned RM eight, and the properties to the west is zoned RS forty residential and Industrial General, and they're an additional parcel or two to the west outside of the incorporated city limits. The letter of intent, this submittal package includes the master development plan and supporting documents for Highberry Point multifamily located on Highway ninety-six. The site is currently zoned RM twenty, proposes twenty, two hundred and forty apartment units. The site will be accessed by two entrances off Highway ninety-six. All internal roads will be private. The water and sewer both have been approved from Water Authority of Dixon County for use there. With the RM twenty multifamily zoning, this property does meet those setbacks and development buffers. And then below that are all of the comments that we went through with the work session. And again, those are written out before you. If there's any questions about any of those specific comments, we can address that. Conditions of approval for the Highberry Point master development plan, site plan to show modifications to site based on PC forty-one twenty-two Planning Commission vote. Plan set to be approved by all utility providers prior to the site plan approval. Provide documentation of all applicable state and federal permits prior to the pre-construction meeting. And then approval of development plans shall be valid for three years from the date of Planning Commission approval. Any modification to the approved plans shall be submitted to the city for review and may result in Planning Commission reconsideration. And that's all of my comments.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion?
I would like to add one thing, and the staff probably might discuss it as well, was not listed in those conditions, but was part of the submittal package, would be the architectural variance. That letter was submitted to each of you in the, in the packet.
You'll state your name for the record?
Yes, ma'am. I'm Chris Pascarella with Pearl Street Partners. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Make a motion we approve?
Second.
May I ask a matter of, I guess, proceed? Prove as all those stipulations?
Those would come before on the site plan.
Okay.
For anything that has been addressed in these comments, it'd be shown on the plat plan.
Okay.
That's correct.
Any other discussion or comments? Good. Okay. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Abstain.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Motion carries.
You.
New business item nine, PC resolution, PC thirty-eight dash twenty-two, site plan, Wash three seven oh six two, one point six seven acres, map forty-two parcel eleven, current zoning C three commercial, property owner.
Wash Associates LLC.
The staff report for PC thirty-eight dash twenty-two, T-Square Engineering has submitted to the city of Fairview a request for site plan approval for Wash three seven zero six two. The property contains one point six seven acres and is currently zoned C three Commercial General. The project is located at map forty-two HC parcel eleven and is nearest to the intersection of Highway one hundred and Cox Pike. The properties adjacent to this project are zoned RS forty single-family residential to the south, east and west, and CG Commercial General to the north. The letter of intent, the intent of this project is to build a car wash on the existing property. The commercial bulk regulations have been met other than what is being requested in the variance, that variance for underground detention was attached. The setbacks and development buffers are as follows, thirty feet to the front and rear, twenty feet to the side, with an eight-foot landscaping buffer adjacent to the residential parcels. The Wash three seven zero six two project is proposing ingress egress to the property by means of one access point from Fairview Boulevard. T-Square Engineering was not required to spend a traffic impact study for, for this project as it did not meet the trip generation. Plan sheets have been provided showing location, dimension, and design of all roadways, entrances, sidewalks, parking, access, and other pertinent surface items and meets the requirements of each item. The following staff comments will be included in Planning Commission Resolution, PC thirty-eight twenty-two. Staff comments regarding specific site plan elements shall be addressed with a revised site plan for review and approval prior to pre-construction meeting. Conditions for approval for Wash three seven zero six two, approval of variance pursuant to City of Fairview subdivision regulations, Article four dash one thirteen two zero one for underground detention. All remaining staff comments to be addressed and approved by staff prior to pre-construction meeting. Plan set to be approved by all utility providers prior to pre-construction meeting. Provide documentation of all applicable state and federal permits prior to pre-construction meeting. And the approval of development plans shall be valid for one year from the date of Planning Commission approval. Any modification of the approved plan shall be submitted to city for review and may result in Planning Commission reconsideration. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. State your name for me?
Jason Patrick.
Mr. Patrick, you're welcome to present us with any additional information you'd like to, if you have any for us, or we can go into questions and discussion.
Everything he said. I, I'm glad to be back here in Fairview again. I was fortunate enough last time, Mayor, I got a phone call before the meeting. I don't suppose I'm that lucky tonight. You got a phone call before our rezoning last time, and I doubt I got one tonight. Did I get one tonight?
No.
Okay, well, I just wanted to check and see.
No, you're in a sentinels.
We're really glad to be here. We're excited about coming to Fairview. The only problem tonight was the restaurant that I always eat at is now closed on Tuesday nights, I guess, so that was substituted by scattered, covered, and smothered, which was lovely and enjoyable. It was at a very nice waffle house. We have a couple of things that we do want to discuss and, and have considered as we go through this. I'm going to turn it over to the smarter person in the room, which is Louis Slovan, and, and, and he's going to go through the details. Slowen. Got it. And he's going to go through the details, but if you have any questions, feel free. I'll be available.
Louis Slowen, again, just wanted to go over that underground detention waiver. Really, this, this site lends itself to having that waiver approved. Above-ground detention is much easier to maintain. I know part of the new stormwater ordinance is trying to make sure everything is maintained and taking care of the above-ground detention. It sits in the rear of the property, so it's not going to be an eyesore for everybody driving down Fairview. So we, we really feel that that lends itself to the, to the variance request. The only other item is, and we, we had talked to staff about this, but we did not have a formal variance letter. We wanted to discuss the pay station location. The current location is, I'm going to point on the screen back here, is here. At one point in time, we had shown it up here, and part of the, I guess, part of the issue is the awnings for the pay station overhang into the setbacks. We have a picture here that kind of shows the, the, the typical pay station, and we were hoping to maybe get consideration on being able to move it back. It doesn't really, it doesn't affect anything other than the setback requirements. It does affect the operations a little bit and not, not allowing for a cleaner queue when the pay station's further back, as it is, the queuing gets a little better for the internal operations when it is moved forward at the desirable location, but.
Can I, may I approach and show you?
And maybe one of my questions was kind of how you proceed through it, so maybe that's a good time to explain that as well.
Yes, so you, you start coming in the entrance here, and you proceed all the way down, and it's a double pay station, and then it turns into a single file through the. and then it turns into a single file through the car wash. And there's vacuum locations here and here, and they can back out and then proceed out with a left or right turn.
How much does it overhang by?
I believe it would overhang by about 10 feet. It's the full, basically the posts of the overhang, the support, the actual part that's in the ground, is right outside of the setback.
Staff have any comment or references in regard to that?
Along that edge, there is a buffer strip that will be placed in for the buffer between commercial and residential. So while this may be overhanging into a setback, there is a buffer to protect the view from adjacent residential properties. As staff, I don't have a recommendation for or against. The applicant did ask to bring that to the Planning Commission, so while there was no formal variance request, we did want to make sure they had the opportunity to bring that up, and it would just be an additional condition of approval for the resolution.
Thank you, sir. And pushing it back allows you to have a deeper bank of cars or traffic, too?
Correct. It lets you queue back a little longer before you start blocking the exit, but then also there's less confusion on the entrance, and there's less time for people to double stack widthwise and try to figure out who goes in first into the bay, so.
And the staff had no issue with the variance on the drainage?
From the engineering side, from traffic side, if it...
For drainage?
The location of it, allowing more vehicles to stack on site is a good thing.
For the open drainage versus the closed?
What was stated is correct. As far as maintenance goes, above-ground is a lot more, a lot easier to maintain.
Okay.
A lot easier to reach the goals of our new ordinance, so.
Make a motion to approve PC 3822?
Second.
Kelly McDonald? Any additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Ms. Sendyard?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
And Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. We're excited to be here. We look forward to seeing all of you at the car wash.
Item number 10, new business, PC Resolution, PC 39-22. Site plan modification, Fernvale Springs condominiums, 4.13 acres. Current zoning RM 12 residential. Property owner SM Commercial LLC.
The staff report for PC 3922. Site plan modification. Southern Consulting has submitted to the city a fairview request for site plan modification for the Fernvale Springs condos Phase 4 project. Property contains 6.59 acres and is zoned RM 12 multifamily residential. This project is located at map 42, Parcel 63, and is nearest to the intersection of Highway 100 and Fernvale Road. The letter of intent, please provide authorization to remove a sidewalk as approved by the Planning Commission in 2018. There is a duplicate redundant sidewalk directly across the street. See the attached exhibits. The location of sidewalk requested to be removed from the plans as approved is located on the southern end of the site along Fernvale Springs Way. The property line of the parcels adjoining to the south is shown to cut across the southern portion of Fernvale Springs Way. Installation of sidewalk as shown on the approved plans would require installation, excuse me, of sidewalk on the adjoining parcel. Plan sheets have been provided showing the original approved plan and the plan showing the removal of the sidewalk. There are no staff comments included with Planning Commission Resolution, PC 3922.
Yes, sir.
Butler?
Yes, sir.
As a part of this, I understand there are no staff comments on this as far as the technical side of this, but we're opposed to this. We understand the concern. My suggestion, as I discussed in the work session, is for the board to take no action on this. If there is an action, we would suggest that you move to deny. This particular question is a matter not of the city's making, and any action by this board simply creates an issue for the city regarding this request. I understand there's some difficulty on the site, but that difficulty was not installed or approved by the city. Additionally, the discussion of duplicate sidewalks is really irrelevant in this case because the duplicate sidewalk sounds more than there is, but in reality, it was just a site plan that had sidewalks approved on both sides of the street. And what's being asked is to remove a part of those sidewalks simply because there's a mistake or some error on the property line between the properties. We don't believe it's proper for the city to take an action that would simply move forward with additional action on behalf of the city for remedies. So our suggestion is to not take any action or move to deny.
Thank you, sir.
I didn't quite understand. If you said, if we take no action, then that's not a denial.
Correct.
No action, Mr. Anderson, is there's no action. The site plan carries as would be.
Because it's an active approved site plan asking for a modification?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Any questions or discussion?
Do we have to make a motion to have no action?
I was going to say, I think it would just be fair to listen to the applicant's thoughts.
Well, state your name for me, sir.
I'm Trent Smith with Southern Consulting. What we're asking is, I may be jumping the gun, but I believe we're talking about the Phase 4 and a Phase 3. During the design stage of this, the Phase 3 representative was involved with all the design features and was in concert or agreement with what we've proposed. And over time, that's changed. The members of their homeowners association do not desire that sidewalk, and the developer, trying to obviously honor their wishes, is making this presentation tonight. What would be, and I don't know that you can, but if you could, what we're asking for is to allow them not to build a sidewalk, but maybe I should say, if the Phase 3 condominiums, which are the ones to the south, don't want it. And if they don't want it, which I think the president's here tonight, what I'd like to do is not, or would be to honor that, and the owner has, the developer has identified to me that he's would, not trying to get out of money, but paying to the sidewalk fund, put in crosswalks. But right now, that sidewalk doesn't necessarily benefit the Phase 3. They don't have sidewalks. So it's not, first, let's get out of the way. It's not an issue of saving money. It's more of an issue of honoring or the current ownership of those, the Phase 3 condominiums. Now, they were built, I believe, in the 2008 era. And that's, in 2018, during the Phase 4 design, they were very, I guess, cooperative with the developer in terms of allowing a connection road to be built and working with him during this design. But since then, things have changed on their board. So if they want the sidewalk, we build it. We're not trying to get out of doing that. If they don't want it, what we'd like to do is honor that and not build it. And practically speaking, it doesn't really do anything. Sidewalk that we're trying to get, want identified to get rid of.
Mr. Collins, do you have some information?
Yes, Mr. Butler, let me kind of walk you through where, and I apologize, I'll point with this to this side. Just so as we understand, this building was built as the last building of Phase 3, I believe, of Fernvale Springs as we know that. The previous property line that bordered this started at this corner, ran along this driveway here, and then it continued from this point to this point. There was a straight line that ran right across to this site. When this building was built, there was a proposal that was made to the Planning Commission to move the property line from this parcel 20 feet from this corner to this corner. So now, rather than it continuing across where this corner was, property line used to run through here at the corner. Now it runs up and runs across. So this property is not a part of this property at all. So what's happened is, within this design, this road and this sidewalk simply makes its way here. This property owner can't, without permission of this property owner, install this sidewalk. You can't install a sidewalk on someone else's property. It's just the nature of where we are. The second question of this is, there is a 20-foot side setback from here to this, to where this sidewalk will be, which would put the sidewalk in infrastructure within the side setback of this building. It's our stance that the remedy for this is not that the city grant a waiver after the fact for the removal of the sidewalk. There's no indication that Fernvale Springs as we know it has requested or ever requested a sidewalk because, Mr. Smith is correct, there are no sidewalks in Fernvale. So it would make no sense for this development, and I've not heard this HOA or this development request sidewalks on the neighboring property, nor am I aware of any management or ownership agreement between this HOA and whoever would own this HOA. I understand this is difficult, but the waiver, the granting of this waiver simply causes problems for the city. All of this is going to be privately owned and privately managed, but the specific to this, if this is granted here or in any circumstance, then we would have a sidewalk that would terminate and a curve on both sides, and we're anti that. I don't know what the solution is for this property owner, but I do know that we are requesting that if the board take any action on this, it be to deny. Again, there would be some remedy in some other way, but I don't think it would be prudent for the board to consider the waiver of that sidewalk in that matter.
Any questions or discussion? Anyone like to make a motion? No motion, no action, we would move to the next item. I'm going to accuse myself from item 11. I currently have interest, but I have a client who has future interest.
Item 11, PC Resolution, PC-40-22. Site plan, the reserves on Chester subdivision, 46 building lots on 60.4 acres. Map 042, Parcel 136.02. Current zoning RS 40. Property owner Duke &amp; Duke LLC.
The staff report for PC 40-22. T-Square Engineering has submitted to the city a fairview request for site plan approval for the reserves on Chester and will develop as a single-phase development. The property contains 60.4 acres and is zoned RS 40 Single Family Residential. The project is located at map 42, Parcel 136.02, and is nearest to the intersection of Highway 100 and Chester Road. The properties adjacent to this project are zoned RS 40 Single Family Residential to the south and west, and R20 residential to the north and east. The letter of intent, these construction plans support the previously submitted development plans for Chester Road subdivision for the same property. Current zoning is RS 40, proposed 46 Single Family lots. The project property has been reviewed by staff and meets the base zoning bulk and area requirements of the RS 40 Single Family Residential regulations, apart from the request for variance of the City of Fairview zoning ordinance, Article 13-102.1 Hillside Development Standards. The City of Fairview zoning ordinance states that subdivided lots with natural slopes of 15% to 20% shall have a minimum lot size of three acres, and lots with natural slopes greater than 20% shall have a minimum lot size of five acres. Slope exhibit and variance requests attached. The setbacks and development buffers are as follows. 50-foot front, 50-foot rear, 25-foot side. T-Square Engineering of the reserves on Chester project is proposing ingress egress to the project by means of one access point from Chester Road. A three-lane minor collector street with 62 feet of right-of-way and three 12-foot travel lanes is being proposed from Chester Road to Lot 19 of the subdivision. The remaining roadway section will provide 50 feet of right-of-way with two 12-foot travel lanes. All roadways will provide curb and gutter, five-foot sidewalks, and five-and-a-half-foot grass strip. Roadways as shown in the site plan shall meet the City of Fairview standards for said road profiles. Additional pavement will be provided on the south side of Chester Road along the lot frontage. T-Square Engineering was not required to submit a traffic impact study for reserves on Chester as the trip generation does not meet the requirements set forth in the subdivision regulations. Plans set have been provided showing existing man-made site features including fences, cellular towers, structures, buildings, above- and below-grade utilities, as well as natural features, including topography, tree canopy, hydrologic features, and all associated buffers. The calculations of natural features and proposed landscaping components are as follows. Zero acres of required open space. 8.73 acres of provided open space. For streetscape landscaping, streets trees spaced no greater than 40 feet apart for the subdivision regulations, 4-106.3 will be provided. The following staff comments will be made in Planning Commission Resolution, PC 40-22. Staff comments regarding specific site plan elements shall be addressed with revised site plans for review and approval prior to pre-construction meeting. Conditions of approval for reserve on Chester project. Planning Commission granting the requested variance on the hillside development standard relative to minimum lot size. All remaining staff comments to be addressed and approved by staff prior to pre-construction meeting. Plans set to be approved by all utility providers prior to pre-construction meeting. Provide documentation of all applicable state and federal permits prior to pre-construction meeting. Approval of development plans shall be valid for three years from the date of Planning Commission approval. Any modification to the approved plans shall be submitted to the city for review and may result in Planning Commission reconsideration. That's all I have for the report.
Thank you. Introduce yourself for the record.
Louis Sloian with T-Square, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
This will be standard sewer systems?
Yes, it'll be a standard sewer that pumps into the existing...
Does staff want to elaborate on the slope variance or any thoughts thereof?
So there are some areas of the plan, and let me... So there's a slope exhibit that was included. It kind of shows the slopes on the lot around the site. And there are some areas that are fairly steep on the backside of the parcel. There's a few which would require a critical lot plan. One of the things that we talked about during the work session is some of the regs that are there based on slopes and lot size and things like that. The way that the current regulations are written, if you have a lot that has 15% slopes on it, it has to be a minimum of three acres per the code because in one part, it requires a two-acre minimum, and in the next, it requires a three-acre minimum of 15%. So I personally don't have an issue with that. I think with the critical lot plans, we can address much of the stormwater concerns. There is a flood plain on the north side of the property. One of the things that we're working through with on our final comments is just some additional erosion control measures to be put in, and they have our comments on that. Those are minor comments on managing runoff during construction. One of the things that we've also required is for, before my mass grading, that all the sediment basins be installed prior to disturbing the ground. That way, there's already a location for runoff to go and be treated before it goes into the flood plain. So staff is working with their engineer on, you know, trying to make sure that we stay in front of the erosion problem, particularly with a site like this that has some locations of significant slopes, so.
Make a motion to approve PC 40-22?
Second.
You need to... Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
And Ms. Senyard.
Thank you, guys. We'll move into bonds and letters of credit. There's one, notation of night, performance bond reduction, Pepper Tree subdivision, phase one. No action needed, just a notification from our staff, and that'll move us into reports for discussion and information. City planning staff, Mr. Sullivan?
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you, sir. City manager, Mr. Collins?
Just a quick thank you. As we grow and these things come to the city, there's a lot of work that gets done. There's a lot of technical information that comes before the board, and we just very much appreciate you guys' time digging into these things, listening, kind of being a part, taking part of the work sessions and those things. Everything we do here builds upon the next thing that we do. There's a lot to learn in every meeting, there's a lot of stuff to do, and it's really, really helpful for us, for staff, for everyone's become before you guys when those conversations are had, and when everyone knows that everyone's well-intended to try and get positive things done. So, I know you guys, just like Planet, City Commission, everyone else does it here and up, but we very much appreciate your time and effort and the work that gets done in these meetings, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. City engineer, Mr. Bygman.
Nothing, sir.
Thank you, sir. City attorney, Mr. Potter. Thank you, sir. We'll go to communication from the Planning Commission members. We'll start, Mr. Kelly.
Just a thank you to the staff for getting everything together, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Anderson?
Same for the staff. I like the format of our paperwork. It's easier to get through this time.
Sir, Mayor Rainey?
I agree. Paperwork was in a great format. I also like we got the email that I could actually see, so thank you, Kevin, for sending that.
Thank you. Ms. Senyard?
Nothing for me.
Thank you. Mr. Jenkins?
Please forgive me for my tardiness tonight. Enjoyed being here and look forward to watching the video from the workshop earlier.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McDonald?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Shulist?
Nothing for me either.
Thank you. I also have nothing. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So, moved.